This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for March 30th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. And let's start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So do we have any open time for the public?
Evening, Robert Floyd Cemetery Commission, College Highway. The Cemetery Commission met yesterday. We assessed the damage from the storm in the cemetery. It was worse than we thought, or at least I presumed the other evening. There is one tree that's 37 feet long that crashed on some gravestones in Section 10. There is a large branch about 16 feet long, evergreen. The first one was a cedar, the evergreen. A branch came down off a tree on gravestones. And in Section 2, a hemlock, 17-foot branch came down. We decided we do not have the resources as a Cemetery Commission to correct the situation, and we rely now on the town to do so. And we do know that Memorial Day is coming up, and I just want to report in.
We'll have to talk about that further. I know the Highway Department is very shorthanded, obviously, and they have put out a message saying that they are picking up storm rush that fell down within the easement area, and that's their main priority and responsibility at this point in time.
Yeah, I agree.
So to the extent that they get into the cemetery at some point in time, which may not be till just around, well, a bit before Memorial Day, they do their first mowing, I think, right?
In case the complaints come in, I just want you to know that we're on top of it as best we can.
Yeah, no, and we'll have to discuss.
And no gravestone looks like it was damaged.
Well, that's good, at least, yeah. We'll have to discuss where any resources may be. We'll have you guys on our budget docket for next week, on the 6th, I believe.
Yes.
Okay.
Cheers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Any other people for open time? If not, we have our Select Board members here tonight, except for John, who's out of town at a meeting, so we'll be able to proceed. And thank you, Donna, for coming. I know Vicki was held up in a meeting in Westfield, and I'm not sure about Becky. I think she might have... She might not have been available either. Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you for coming, and we'll at least get through this portion. And just so everybody knows, our next one will be on April 6th, and we have on board, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have Border House Cemetery Commission, Concom Building Commissioner, and Park Department?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That's the plan.
Is anyone left after that?
Is what?
Is there anybody else left after that?
No, I don't think so. No, I think that's everybody. There are a couple of other committees that really didn't have any changes in their budget request, so it really isn't absolutely necessary to come in unless they'd like to. But these were ones that had more budget narratives that looked like they were asking for different things from what they've done in the past. So we wanted to be sure to hear what they were talking about, and just because, I think I mentioned Donna at our last meeting, just because we're up with the time crunch, you know, normally, a lot of these groups would probably be coming toward finance first rather than coming here, but we'll try and just do what we can. And to the extent any of your folks can join in on the 6th, you're more than welcome to do that, or whether it's a joint meeting or just come, either way. Okay?
And can I just, I believe, on the 11th of April, there's a request for the Public Safety, Building Feasibility Committee meeting, to have a joint meeting, and also the Senior Center. To bolt at critical points.
We'll work it out with that on terms of the agenda.
Is that, was that right? You're on both committees, too? I mean, aren't we talking about both of them? Sort of one giving the report from the feasibility study completion, and the other one?
For a start. For a start.
Start, because there are interviews for the firms next week.
Okay. We'll definitely have a busy month ahead of us, no matter what we're doing here.
Yep.
All right. So tonight, we're really here to talk about budgets. We have no presentations or reports. We're going to focus on, I don't know if there's any update in the estimated revenue package from what we heard a couple of nights ago. I assume not. Okay? So let's jump in with the budget requests for FY '24, and let's start with the assessors. And Dave Zagorski, and we all have, well, if you've got it online, but you've got also in your packages, the way I understand this, you've got a bit of a narrative as well as the relevant page of the budget that may or may not have changed a little bit from what we have online. I'm not sure about that. But we'll leave it to you, Dave. So just introduce yourself and tell us what you're thinking about for the Board of Assessors.
All right. Hello, I'm Dave Zagorski. I'm the interim Assistant Assessor, and presenting the budget for you this evening. Our budget basically has stayed level funded, except for line 28, which is Assessor Software Support. Our contract for support with Vision has increased. Vision is our camera assist software, the main program we use to set our values in town. So, and then, request number two, we are asking to increase line item number 26, the Assessor Admin Assistant Salary. At present, the office is only staffed part-time, and it's very difficult to address taxpayers' needs, along with the daily work that needs to be done by our Assessor Admin Assistant. The issue is particularly acute with the Principal Assessor's Office position still being open. Moving forward, we are still continuing to search for a full-time Principal Assessor. This work is being done by our part-time interim assessor, plus the hiring of consultants and the Board of Assessors. This is no longer a sustainable path with the loss of Dave Arnold, which, you know, pretty affected the office pretty hard. Should we not find a Principal Assessor? We are working on other options, but these are not our first choice. We are looking into sharing the Principal Assessor position with another municipality or hiring an outside firm. So just two requests for increase, otherwise level fund.
So we have requests on the software support for Vision and then on the Assistant Admin, Assessor Admin Wages, is that right?
Yes.
All right. Questions?
So in your thinking...
Could you move your mic up, please?
Sorry. In thinking about hiring an outside firm, do you have an idea what that might cost if that happens in fiscal year '24?
I don't, offhand. I don't know if Darcy has that information or not, but I don't have that information on me right now. But I know that it's not cheap. I know that.
Yeah, I was thinking we should pencil something in in the event that that becomes the only alternative for...
Yeah, I think for this year, I think we can probably get through, but, you know, we'll definitely want to look into the future if things aren't changing.
All right. Thanks.
So right now, thank you, Dave, for holding everything together there in the department, along with Janine. You've both been doing an incredible job.
Thank you.
And then on top of that, losing the Chair of the Board of Assessors has been very difficult. So right now, I think Dave Arnold and the rest of the people in the office have done an amazing job trying to capture new growth and to try to keep things going. You know, without people, I mean, I've been in the office for meetings every two weeks, and I can tell you that people come in all the time and with excise tax questions and all kinds of baitments and so forth. And it just seems to me that with the small number of hours that Janine works, it's incredibly difficult to get everything done, especially with your hours are less than 20.
Yeah.
So it's very difficult. I do worry that we're going to leave money on the table. I think this is the front door of our revenue, and I feel that with more administrative assistant time in the office. So right now, she's working less than 20 hours a week, so the increase is to ultimately have one person theoretically in the office for the hours that the Town Hall is open. And I think that that is going to go a long way to helping with the incredible amount of work that's needed on the short term. So that's my, just want to second that.
So she's working how many hours now?
She works, I think, is it 14 hours?
I think she's, yeah, 14 hours.
Yeah, 14.
So this would pretty much double our salary?
Yeah, it would basically put somebody in the office Monday through Thursday.
Yeah.
As an admin, you know, admin assistant.
And you're thinking of Janine?
Well, Janine is, you know, is ultimately going to retire. I mean, she did retire from one position, and she's back where she used to work quite a long time ago. And she's, you know, it's very unfair to, I think, in some ways to put, people come in, and if they're not happy with something that has to do with their taxes or their assessments or something, it puts an admin assistant in a difficult position of addressing things with the townspeople that I feel that it's not necessarily fair to her to do.
So my question is, are you thinking of doubling Janine's time, or are you thinking of getting a second person?
A second person, but ultimately, somebody that might be interested in covering the office full-time when she retires.
Got it. All right. And I think, just a quick question on the maps. These are the large maps at your front counter.
Yeah.
Are they done every year, or are they...
Yeah. Whenever somebody does a plan, you know, a lot split or combine or whatever, we, you know, I go through them every year at the beginning of the new year for everything that happened in the past year, and then I submit that to the mappers, and they update our maps. And I think that, for the GIS as well.
So Ty and Bonn actually does the large maps for us. That's a regular expense. And then the Board of Assessors just hired a Principal Assessor who is going to be doing, he came up with a plan for, what, the next five years worth of assessments that are required?
You mean Matt?
Matt.
Yeah, he's a consultant.
He's a consultant, right.
Yeah.
So he's going to, he's going out and doing...
He's going out, he's doing the inspections and picking up new growth and cyclical inspections and whatnot.
Yeah. And he's familiar with Vision and hopefully Near Map, so he'll be able to not only...
Yeah, he seems to...
But look at Near Map and see if there's new sheds or new whatever, buildings, benches.
He's familiar with Near Map, and I'm trying to get familiarized with Near Map so that I can kind of look as well, so we can both kind of be...
See aerial imaging.
That was one of the things that you, I think you all had brought on as another tool to help capture new growth.
Yeah, Dave, I think Dave Arnold was the mastermind behind that, and, you know, he was going to devote a lot of his time to looking at that and everything, and then...
Yeah. Now, just a thought with that, because we've seen this before. So with the software support for Vision, so you've got an increase there, is there anything like, I don't know, other kind of annual maintenance costs or subscription costs for...
That is, yeah, that is the cost, is the software support. That's what's gone up.
But what about for near mapping? Has that got anything to go with it, too?
No, they're not, they're not together.
Every year?
Yeah, they have a...
And there are unlimited licenses, so just a reminder to all the other departments, Planning and Concom and Building, that there are licenses available for others' departments to use this as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. There was one other thing I wanted to mention. I think on it.
We'll come back. Donna, anything? Joy, anything? Nancy, anything else? Okay.
It's pretty straightforward budget.
Very, yeah.
Unless they're complicated ones, compared to some we've seen, right?
What I wanted to say is that unfortunately, there is not a relationship between the Building Inspector Software and the Assessor's Office. So ideally, people would come in for building permits and such, and there would be some type of interface with the software. Is that capable, is that possible in Vision, or what is Building Inspector use?
I don't know about in Vision, but I know like in West Hampton and Sunderland, I can access the building departments, their database or whatever, so that I can pull the permits as well to see, you know, what's being built and what's being added and all the building permits and so on and so forth. I don't know if it can be integrated with Vision, but I know that there's ways of getting, you know, access to the building inspectors.
Yeah, I think Janine can get access to it. The problem is it's a duplication to go ahead and then enter it in.
Right.
There are software programs that do allow an automatic upload of sorts.
And I think, I'll turn it over to Ed, because I think this is one of the issues we'd been talking about in cost efficiencies, so...
Yeah, once we've accomplished our server upgrade and made a few other changes, the new financial software and the building software will be able to interface.
Oh, good.
Oh, okay.
That'd be good. I mean, the idea is to try and reduce both the manual and, you know, hands-on paperwork.
Right, yeah.
Somebody having to walk around to all the departments in Town Hall to get a signature. And so trying to look at this from a different point of view to get that better than it is now, for sure. I think I just have one question. I know we've been without an assessor, what, over a year now?
Mm-hmm.
I forget. Elise?
I've been here, I've been here over a year now.
Yeah. So as you talk about...
Yeah, '21.
August of '21. Oh, wow. Really? 18 months or more, yeah. Well, time flies, isn't it? Good question. So it's obviously been a challenge to try and recruit somebody, and even though we had done some salary modifications, I think, last year on this. So you mentioned about maybe having to go a different path, which wouldn't be your first choice, but at what point in time do you think the Board would be ready to say, okay, we've tried our best, and this isn't going to fly, and we need to either do that? Whomever can answer?
Yeah, yeah. So basically, I did a telephone email survey of all the towns in Western Mass that are similar to ours, so I heard from quite a few of them. There was only one I didn't hear from. And the bottom line is, it's not exactly apples and apples. So you have different titles, Administrative Assessor, you have Principal Assessors, and I also did a research on all the towns in the Hampshire Regional District. And with the exception of West Hampton, where Dave is the Assessor, they don't have Principal Assessors. They're small towns, and they contract out most of the services, and they have an admin in the office to actually greet the public. The other towns, they have basically a Principal Assessor. So we looked at how many hours a week, we looked at what's their pay, and so the first goal is still to try to recruit a Principal Assessor, and there are some possibilities there. And then the second choice is to try to share one with another town. East Hampton currently is without a Principal Assessor, but they just pretty significantly raised up their rate of that position, so they're primarily looking to get their own at the moment. So, but there are things that are being done, that are being looked at. Then lastly, would be the contract. So first would be to hire our own, second would be to share with another town, third would be to contract the service.
But again, any, so like within six months' time, are we saying, if we don't have somebody by December, there's no good leads, there's really no level of interest to share with another town, we can't find another municipality that would like to join in with us?
Yeah.
We got to just go a different, or go a different route, whether it's...
Yeah, I think setting a timeline would probably, you know...
So that's just something to go forward, I mean, I'm sure you don't have that right now. But I think as you go forward into the next two or three months, I think trying to set some realistic timeframes, you know, at what point do we sort of pull the plug and say, okay, we've tried our best, and we need to either look at, really seriously talk to another municipality to share services or else, you know...
It's one of those situations where you don't have a full-time Principal Assessor. You only have a part-time, less than 20 hours a week administrative Assessor, Admin Assessor in the office, and then you also have the Chair of the Board of Assessors, sadly passed away, who was the, you know, he was...
Main, yeah.
He was the main person there.
Right.
So now you have two people. One is brand-new on the Board of Assessors, and Darcy, who's trying very hard to keep everything going. But again, this is a tremendous opportunity to have enough staffing in this office to bring in the revenue that is there.
I agree.
Yeah, but, you know, we have a meeting next Tuesday, and I will bring that to the group to say, let's like set a deadline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I think right now, hiring Matt to do those inspections will be a big help.
Yeah, that'll bring in the new growth and everything, so, yeah.
That'll be good.
Yep.
Good. All right. If no other questions, then thanks, Dave. Appreciate you coming.
All right.
Thanks a lot, Dave.
Okay. Next up on the list, I believe, we have our Town Clerk, Lucy Dalton.
All right. Hello, Lucy Dalton Town Clerk. First of all, I want to apologize for all the paperwork and for the spreadsheet that you got from the Mass Town Clerks Association that you can't read, that I don't know why it was printed out for you, because it was sent to you by email, by Bradley, I believe. Bradley, you sent it to them, correct? So I apologize. I'm not sure why you got that printed, but I only sent it to Bradley to send to you just to show what some of the town clerks with our same population, the salary is for them. But I really don't want to go over salary tonight, because I would kind of like to meet with members of the Finance Committee, if possible, to go over that at some point.
Yeah.
If they will meet with me.
But shall we, we should put up the budgets that we're looking at, though, first, or...
And second of all, well, secondly, I also apologize because I didn't realize Bradley sent you the budget with fiscal year one was, didn't have a level funded, and it should have been level funded. It has different numbers. It should be level funded. And...
So this is the one that...
Yeah, that's the correct one, yes. Yep. But the wish list two is wrong. It should not be that, so...
Now, hang on, just a second.
So I can, it should, that should be wish list, that should be, one should be there.
So you want?
So the numbers that were in one should be there.
All right.
You know, like the 50, no, 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 no. The first, the salary should be 5109616. Can you change it? Yeah. 16.
16.
The second one should be 1656963.
56963.
The third one should be 2,000, yeah. And then the rest are correct, yep. Yeah.
So 87 to 15?
Yeah.
So is what Bradley sent out correct?
No.
No.
So this is correct. This is correct, yeah.
What's different on it?
Yeah.
You're supposed to tell the salary is different.
The salary is different, yeah. So just the one. And the assistant, yeah.
The rest, I think, is the same?
Yeah, yeah. Just, yeah.
Yeah. The other ones are the same?
No, the assistants should change to, yeah, no, the assistants is right.
That's correct?
Um, yeah. Actually, budget one should be 16244, sorry, 74. I'm, yeah. That should be 1624474, because that's what she has, yeah. Okay. That's right. That's the correct budget. So now I can explain.
Okay.
The assistant wages, it's just a 2%, you know, we are doing more work in our office, two precincts, more people. Our town is really growing a lot. We're doing a lot more early... Go ahead, sorry.
Can I just ask you, you said 16244 is currently what she's getting?
Yeah.
And then the two, you said 2% what?
COLA.
Was the 32 added 2% to there?
Yeah.
Four dollars.
Okay, I thought everyone was not supposed to add 2% for this purpose.
Then it should be wrong. Okay, then it's...
Tab one is correct. It's level funded. The Select Board and the Finance Committee will decide on the COLA.
That's what...
So the question is, did you already add the 2%?
Into that, into the second one.
16244, you did add 2%?
No.
No.
Okay, right.
Yeah, sorry, no. I deny, sorry.
If you're looking 23, that's what it was.
Yes, that's what it was.
Okay. All right. I thought I had got a different answer there, but that's fine.
Okay. So, oh, so we are growing, we're doing a lot more work, early voting, two precincts, a lot more mail-in voting. There's just the two of us. We do have election workers, but they do only work elections, so I feel like she deserves to have an increase. She only works 18 hours a week, so, and elections, so that's why that is there. The Town Clerk expenses, I'll go to that explanation, the breakdown, is where all the supplies come from. So it's a lot of the census supplies I buy from there, paper, envelopes, postage, confirmation cards, my bond for my town clerk, bonding, paper, just basic general office supplies come out of that. So, and then for vital records, the red binders, I mean, it's a lot, and I'm only asking for $2,000 for that. So that's a lot. I did find out that I can get the bond paper from the state, so that's going to save me money. That will cross that off. I can get that for free. They sent me a case, so that will hopefully last a little while. And then the Mass State Corrections Office is going to send me a quote for envelopes that they do printing for, and you can order 1,000 of them, and they will print them, the correctional corrections office will print them. So we just have to send them, I just have to send them a sample.
Is that something that the rest of the town can look into as a cost efficiency thing?
Probably can.
It's one of the things that we've been talking about in terms of having a, not really, not really central purchasing per se, but a same source that everybody would be directed to Vendor X for paper and toner, for example, and binders or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, that Mass Town Clerk Association is out, it shouldn't be there, it should be out of there. I have to pay for the general code maintenance fee, which is going to be 1195 annually, so...
This is our new E360?
E360, so that's going to come out of there. And, you know, the office supplies, Town Clerk's supply line, expenses line is going to change, because, you know, I won't have to order them all the time, so that number will change. Let's see, election supplies, maintenance of the new machines, you know, they charge us to come and maintenance them. It shouldn't say handicap, it should say physically disabled machine. I apologize for that. That should have been changed, but they do charge us for that. We have to order our ballots, and the ballots cost between $2,700 and $3,000 each election, the mail-in voting supplies, you know, postage, the envelopes we get from the state to mail them out. But we also have to acknowledge when registered voters register to vote, we have to mail them acknowledgement letters, and we have to do that by law, and they have to go by paper. They cannot be mailed, emailed to the voter. Legal paper for voters lists. We are looking into poll pads. They are $1,000 each. We need special tape seals and ballot containers, because they are ballots, and they need to be sealed for two years. So that's, that's under election, well, that was under election expenses, so. I do not have an election registration salary line, which is on the other spreadsheet budget. Other, that, yeah, there is no salary for election registration salary. I'm not sure where that line came from, but that shouldn't be there.
That's not your...
Yeah.
Oh, it's a duplicate of the wages one?
No, it's 01516113 down there. Yeah, I'm not sure. I've never seen, I've never used that line before, so...
There's been nothing in it for a long time, so...
Yeah.
It looks like it's a line that changed its name back in 2016, and it should go away, maybe?
Yeah.
Perhaps?
Not sure, but it's never been used, so. But the expenses is where the big number is, because of, like I said, the two precincts and we're, I mean, we already have 764, like I said, mail-in ballots that we have to mail out for the local election, so. Election workers, because we have two precincts, we're going to need more workers, $15 each. We do have a March primary, next March, and then we're going to have the May 2024 local election. We're going to have an annual town meeting in May, and we have a special town meeting in, if... have an annual town meeting in May. And we have a special town meeting in, if, if this December. Um, so, you know, they should be paid minimum wage. Some of them work longer than they should be, but the primary and the general elections are from seven AM to eight PM and our local election is from twelve PM to eight PM. So, um, so that's where that election registration expenses or wages comes from. Fifty-two ninety to fifty-three hundred. So, um, if you want to, dog control, I put five hundred dollars in there just because it's one twenty-five for the dog licenses. We have to have them from, they are made from Franklin County, um, can't remember the name of it, but they make up the dog licenses. Um, I may be able to get them made up cheaper somewhere. I can look into that. But we do have the software company that just charges maintenance and I might be able to look into getting that cheaper too. So, and that's it. So.
Okay.
All right. That's, that's about it.
Can you just back up to the wages?
Just Donna, would you go? Sorry, thank you.
I just wondered on the elections, do you only get reimbursed from the state if it's a, involves a state election or for the mail-in ballots and the time and stuff, do you can get any of that money back?
For local? For local or just state? Are you asking about state? Only state. We get from the state. Yeah. Yeah. And we do get reimbursed for postage from the state when it's a state election. We do get postage reimbursed back. So.
As well as election.
No. Uh, yes. If, if we do have workers, yeah. Yep. Yep. If we do early voting and if they spend extra time. It's only early voting though. If, yeah. Not, not for regular hours. I mean, if they work in the office during their regular hours, we don't get reimbursed for that. If they're doing their, if they're doing their regular hours and they're putting in for it, then they shouldn't be because it's during your regular business hours. If they're doing outside of their hours, then yes, the state will reimburse us.
But if you have to have election worker.
Come in, yes.
Or in addition to the people that you had in your.
Yes, then we get reimbursed. Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Yep.
Okay, so just one clarity on the, on the dog licenses while we're there. Sorry, were you finished on that? I'm sorry. Yep. So in the narrative, we've got one twenty-five, but you've put in five hundred in the budget. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah. Yeah. I know it doesn't really add up, but.
And then what was the other budget narrative piece right there? Sorry, right under the dog, dog licenses? What's the?
That was just the assistant clerk wages. Yeah.
Four ninety-five was for which?
That was for, um, it's together, dog control. It's for maintenance of the software because she has to update it every year. The software person has to update it.
So the one twenty-five and the four ninety-five go together?
Yeah. It doesn't add up to five hundred.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Cause we can sometimes order less dog licenses. So I put in an extra because, you know, one year we had to order eight hundred licenses, you know, one year we ordered six hundred.
But the five hundred includes the licenses themselves and the software maintenance?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, just wanted to be sure. I got it right?
Yep. So.
Can you go back to the budget sheet, the Excel sheet?
Yep.
So I'm just a little confused because I thought it was supposed to be like column one was only contractual increases and then column two was going to be like a wish list. So with all those things over there, five hundred ten, two fifty, five hundred, those aren't all just contractual increases, right?
That's my wish list.
And that's supposed to be on the, so those should be gone and it's more of the second column, right? So I thought column one was supposed to be only contracts that we don't have, you know, that, oh.
Oh, yeah, that should be, yeah, that, that should be the fifteen hun, yeah. Yes.
Right. So the.
Yeah. So the, yes, so the expenses should be fifteen hundred in the town clerk expenses. Yeah. Right. Yeah.
So the year-to-year change, that second.
Yeah, it should, yes.
Twelve sixty should be empty.
Yeah. Right. Yes.
No, there's no.
Except for the dog control. Cause there was nothing there.
Well, was that?
So is that an additional five hundred?
Yeah. Go back.
Yeah.
Can you scroll over to twenty-three Bradley, just so we can just see what twenty?
Yes, the fifteen, yes.
Thank you.
That's right.
So, what's it showing it? Totally clear where that was.
Yeah, it was zero. So dog control should be zero.
It's not in there. Wasn't in there for twenty?
Why? Because it was a washer?
Isn't it out of a revolving fund?
That animal control is.
Huh?
I thought the money for the dog licenses goes to.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Dog licenses.
Right, it's a revolving fund.
Oh, okay.
So it shouldn't be in the budget at all?
Okay.
Right?
Right.
That's why it shouldn't be there.
No, you can take that out then.
And to your knowledge, does the revenue from the licenses and all of that total at least five hundred dollars to cover your expenses?
It should, yeah. Bradley, can you take that, take the five hundred out?
Our Westfield, uh.
Well, and the Westfield charges.
Yeah, I mean, in the revolving account, yeah.
Do we know where the revolving fund stands right now?
Um, are you part of, are you in the, is the Finance, did they open their meeting?
They don't have a quorum, so they do not need to.
Okay, she's just asking as a, not as a Finance Committee member, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, she's asking as a Finance Committee member. They are not deliberating on anything.
I know. I'm just asking. Thank you. Okay.
So the question was, the revolving fund again? Donna, I'm sorry. What was your question?
I'm just asked what the.
Balance was.
Uh, let's see.
I haven't seen any balances on these revolving funds for a long.
Yeah.
Is that information available Bradley, do you know? For the revolving funds?
Last expense and revenue reports you sent out.
Yeah.
Did that have him on there?
Recently.
I haven't seen, I don't know either. So.
We have a expense report from three sixteen.
That's the last I got. Yeah.
Doesn't twenty-two have to be closed? Are you going to be a rosary for the weather?
Right, he'd have to, he'd have to look at the ending balance at twenty-two and then what has come in for, and been expended for twenty-three, but he could tell you that.
So if anything that I've put in for revenue for twenty twenty-three is not added in then yet, correct?
You won't see it because the fund's not in the expense.
Dog control.
Under dog control.
Yeah, historically, that's covered.
Yeah, okay.
Westfield charges plus.
Yeah, okay.
The expenses of the dog licenses.
So you can take that five hundred out then. Yeah.
So again, the amount again, sorry Bradley.
Thank you Bradley.
Thanks Bradley.
At the end of twenty-two, there was fifteen thousand seven hundred thirty dollars eighty-nine cents. Currently in twenty-three, there's a negative one thousand because there's no prior year balance pulled over. So.
So it'd be fourteen thousand.
Around fourteen thousand.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
So the software maintenance should be charged.
Yeah.
To that. Yeah.
Absolutely. Yep.
Yep. Okay.
To the wish, to one, to column one?
To the revolving.
To the revolving one.
Right.
Shouldn't be, the dog shouldn't be in the budget.
Right.
Right.
Yep. I'll just pay it out of that then. Yeah.
That can come up.
I can just pay it out of that then. Yeah.
Let's repeat what you just said.
So the, the software maintenance that she.
For the dog?
Right.
In her budget.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
I can pay it out of that revolving fund.
Sixty while you were saying that, but you're talking about the software dog stuff.
Yeah, the dog one, not the, not the general bylaws and zoning bylaws. Yeah. Okay. Okay. So the five hundred goes out on both sides, right? Wish list and both. Yeah.
And you can change that first budget one to eleven five down there to expensive, to eleven five and then that registration, yep.
Yeah.
Yep. And then town clerk expenses to fifteen hundred. Yep. Sorry about that.
So it sounds like E three sixty is a contractual expense.
It is.
Yeah.
So that should be in column one.
And that's new.
Right.
Yep.
So that should be added into if it's under town clerk expenses.
Column one.
Correct.
So, so where would that go? Under expenses?
Town clerk expenses. So you would take the fifteen hundred dollars and actually add the new.
Was it one thousand or something?
The new contract support for E code to it.
Okay.
One thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars. Yeah.
Okay. So fifteen hundred plus one, one ninety-five?
Yeah.
So.
So that, yeah.
So that should be twenty-six ninety-five. My head is working right now.
Yep.
Instead of fifteen hundred.
Right.
Yep.
In column one.
Yep.
Right.
To fifteen hundred is?
Yep.
Make it twenty-six ninety-five.
Yeah.
Did you say it was one one nine five?
Yeah. For the maintenance. Yeah.
So that would be the same, wouldn't it? Or no?
No, I would take that one. She does have a wish list. So you take the two thousand and add the eleven ninety-five to it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yep. I get it.
Okay. So.
That's clearer.
So it'd be thirty-one ninety-five.
Yeah.
Make it simple. Thank you.
Right. But even though, so we've got the year-to-year, okay. Got it. Okay. So eighty-one two eighty-three is our, our basic budget request.
That's not right. The election registration wages, ten dollars. That doesn't make sense.
Change.
Just the change. Well, I mean, it should be more, but I put fifty, I just made it an even number. That's all. So, I don't, I don't know how it got to fifty-two ninety because I didn't, I don't know where that number came from.
So you were just making it around number?
Can, I, I didn't even put that fifty-two ninety in there. I don't even, can you go back up to twenty-two?
Just from all the calculations that you did for the number of workers and hours.
Cause it was forty-five hundred and then I don't know where the fifty-two ninety came from.
Well, we, it was a minimum wage increase.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So that's where it came.
For twenty-three that you're currently working on, right?
Yeah.
So that's the level funded, is the fifty-two ninety.
Yeah.
And there won't be, there won't be a new cost of living increase.
Right.
I hope not.
For January. So that stays the same.
So might just make it fifty-two ninety. But that number came from the calculation of the number of workers times the number of hours that you did.
So it was just a difference of ten dollars?
Yeah, because some people work three hours, some people work two hours, some people work four hours, some people work eight hours.
So did you actually compute the number of elections you anticipate?
Yeah.
Everything and multiply times the number of staff you need?
Yeah.
And that's how you came up with, and it came out to be ten dollars more than what was originally?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what was in her worksheet.
Yeah. Okay. Donna, you had a quick answer.
And that was my question too, what I was just asking because it was a little part of a big discrepancy in dollars. You know, if you go back and look at eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and then it jumped in twenty-two to forty-five hundred.
That would be.
Yeah, that, because it, because they were switched over to the operating budget.
Yeah.
They were switched over to the operating budget. Before it was paid differently.
Right, it wasn't paid on a wage account. It was paid on a vendor account.
And we have two precincts now. So that's.
But that change was because it was, we were required by the state to pay.
Actually by the IRS.
Right. Yeah.
To make it a wage account rather than vendor account. So that's when that changed?
Right. When you were here Donna, it was not, right? It was out of payroll?
Yeah.
Or vendor.
Can you go back and look, so I can see across the change in that?
Yeah. So there, so there would have been that change to the wage account?
Yeah.
From a vendor account and the increase.
So election wage, so it's twenty-six, three, twenty-four, twenty-four.
Okay.
Yeah.
So sixteen sixteen, and that's where it jumped up to forty-five, then forty-five, forty-five.
Yeah.
Right. Twenty-one.
Yeah. And then it went up because of the minimum wage mostly, I think.
Yeah. Okay.
Although that was, and the precinct.
Yep.
Okay. Francine has a question?
Yeah. So, I mean, I know we have one more election to go in this fiscal year.
Yep.
What are our actual expenses in that line to date?
So I didn't, I don't have that for.
We just got it from Bradley, so let's.
I'd have to go back and look at the report. Do you have that?
Well, we have one more election and it's going to be.
I know we have one more and to date we've spent.
This should be under what? Election?
Four thousand one hundred forty-two dollars and fifty one thousand.
And that's in the wages. Yeah.
Four thousand one forty-two fifty-one.
Four thousand?
What? No.
Under election and registration wages, the budget is fifty-two ninety currently.
Yep.
Spent forty-one, forty-two and eleven forty-seven, eleven forty-eight left.
So you should make it.
Eleven forty-eight. So.
Yeah. Yeah, that should cover it. Yeah.
Seventy-eight percent of that line has been spent.
So you'll make it.
And see the election registration expenses, there's four thousand five dollars and sixty-nine cents, which should cover the ballots.
Yeah.
For the local election.
Okay.
You know, and the reason why I'm asking for eleven thousand seven fifty is because we don't know if there's going to be some kind of special election at some point. Hopefully not, knock on wood. I mean, in twenty twenty, we had someone pass away that was in the Senate. And so we had to have a special election. So there was five elections, I mean, five and two special meetings. We had three meetings or two meetings that year. So.
So this will get us through the current.
So we have to prepare for that.
Yeah. This will get us through the May town election.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And then what you're asking for is the state election in, when, November?
Uh, nope.
Yep.
Nope, in March. The March primary is March twenty, yep. It's March. Yeah.
March primary and then next year's town election as well.
But if you, and any special town meeting or, yeah. But next year is a state primary and a presidential. So we don't know how many people are going to want to vote in that state primary. So we have to be prepared for the expenses of, cause what comes out of that?
FY twenty-five?
What?
That would be FY twenty-five.
No, for March. For March, we'll come out of FY twenty-four. The primary will come out of March twenty-four. So we have to prepare for the ballots for that. So.
Okay. All right. I think we got it.
Yep.
All right. So back on the current budget spreadsheet then. We're at two, just to be sure we got the right, eighty-one two eighty-three is.
And I can, I can send you an updated one if you want with, like this, if you want with, okay.
All right, where he's made the changes tonight.
Yeah.
Just verify that we've got the right changes. That's all. Okay. So eighty-one two eighty-three and then the wish list is eighty-seven nine ten.
Yep.
I think we're on the same, same page with this. Okay?
Can I just ask a question? Um, even though Finance is not here, do, can I ask you this?
Finance is here. They're just not, they're not able to have a.
I know, but can I ask, can I ask a question? Do you think that you're going to have a meeting with a quorum at some point before?
I mean, I'm not the chair, so I don't call meetings.
Yeah. Okay. I, I just am wondering because, I mean, budget recommendations are supposed to be by the Finance Committee. So.
I think that it's frustrating to me. This is the second year I've been on Finance and I did it because I felt there was a need and I was trying to be helpful to the town. But with only three of us who are active, you know, even active and can't be at every meeting, um, aboard the size that should be other people taking up some slack. So, you know, I think, you know, people can't do everything or three people can't do everything.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Greatest there was anybody walking in once in a lifetime. It's really only busy during budget season. The rest of the time it's not generally.
I'm just asking.
So I did test Vicky earlier and asked her, we're going to try to talk this weekend and see if we can, I know she's been really busy.
Yeah. I'm just asking because it is part of our bylaw and to be part of the budget process. So.
Well, we're trying to fill in as, do it best we can to meet all of our deadlines, recognizing we've got lots of people with multiple commitments and other jobs.
I sent out fifty postcards to people that are on the street listing, had background in banking, accounting, finance or whatever, and did not hear from a single person. So, you know, we have a problem with being a small town trying to run the government with a small amount of worker bees.
I know. I know.
And I appreciate you being here and you.
Yeah. Whoever can be here.
Very experienced in terms of the budget for municipalities.
Yeah.
It's just very difficult. I've been, you know, I haven't wanted to step on the Finance Committee toes, but we're just trying to, I mean, we're having meetings every Tuesday and Thursday to try to do this. So hopefully the Finance Committee will look at the entire budget and maybe hopefully have a meeting with us beforehand and kind of go, go over the line by line like we usually do.
Right. Yeah.
Here, I love to hear from them in terms of their recommendations and priorities.
Right. And don't forget, I mean, if, if, if no one has any more questions, the caucus is April fourth, Tuesday.
Right.
And you can be nominated on the floor in this room, 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. There are many seats open.
Yep.
Finance Committee needs, needs seats, so... All right, and the Select Board.
And it's a minimum of 25 people.
We need 25 registered voters here, yes. So, all right.
All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lucy.
I appreciate it, okay. And sorry about all the quick changes.
Well, just, I think Bradley's modified them as we've gone tonight, but you can just, you know, verify offline that they are the correct ones, okay?
Thank you.
To the extent that there's a modification to be done in the budget narrative, it would be good to just her just clarify that if there was there.
Bradley, we can talk tomorrow if you need, or Monday.
Monday, sometimes. Okay.
You know, I do think that, you know, the itemized list of general office supplies... I mean, I'm just kind of surprised that there isn't more central purchasing. That... And the same thing with election supplies. It just seems like every department is ordering their own, like, brown envelopes and white envelopes, and it just seems like... And paper. It just seems like that we could save by having central purchasing.
That is one of the things that we've been working on in the Cost efficiencies Committee, and the main thing is we don't want to do bulk purchasing because we have no place to store anything, right? So we don't want giant reamed boxes of paper, but we are looking at how to consolidate, figure out through maybe the state contracts, which are the vendors that are the most likely ones to, you know, direct all of the departments to vendor X if you're going to order X, and vendor Y if you're going to order something else. So that's what's in the process at the Cost efficiencies Committee meeting. So that will be something that will be forthcoming.
If I can just answer for my office, or our office. With the Town Clerk's office, we have to have special envelopes for the census. I mean, maybe they can be ordered through, but they have to be window envelopes, and they have to be a certain size, and they have to say certain things. But like I said, the mask corrections, you know, is going to give us a quote, and also...
Ones are very different from anybody else's.
Right. And the vital records paper has to be bonded, so that's why the state is giving it to us, so... Which is good.
The state made us have two precincts, so they didn't pay for that.
I know. I know. I agree. Thank you.
Good, thanks, Lucy. All right. Next up, Treasurer Collector, Jen Day.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how'd you do?
Good.
Hello.
So are we going to start on my regular Treasurer Collector, Bradley, or... Where would you... I'm in charge.
Pull up and go with the budget sheet, are we...
Yeah, you can go to Treasurer Collector.
I think this is the one I have, so this looks good so far.
Oh, here, yeah.
So why don't you talk us through it a little bit?
All right, so Treasurer Collector's salary, Budget 1 is level funded. Budget 2, I believe, I did a 4% there.
Is there a formula there, Bradley?
I don't think I did it within... Well, for my salary, Bradley.
No, on the wish list one, sorry.
Yeah. So Treasurer Collector certification, you know, that's the same for both budgets. Salaries has a change because I calculated it using the $21 an hour for the Assistant Treasurer Collector because that's what Angie was hired at for the interim position. As of right now, I'm not sure, you know, what that's going to end up being. Angie's last day is, she gave her notice, her last day is April 13th, so...
And you've been recruiting this position, right? And have you had any...
I have two applicants. They're both pretty qualified. I interviewed the first one, and she... Her bottom line is $26 an hour, so... Yeah. So I'm not sure what's going to happen there. I mean, it's hard, because when they're qualified, you know, they want more money, so...
So does that figure represent where in the actual scale of the position? Is it within the scale of the position?
I think I brought that with me. The $21 represents... It's basically step 5 on the scale. So...
So the calculation for this position is based on the 21 step 5?
Is based on the 21. That's why it's not level funded, because I based it off of what Angie was getting paid now and not what was budgeted last year.
But it doesn't exceed the range of the position? That's currently...
No.
Within PQB's chart?
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
So the wish list, I believe, I had put in step 9. So 2363 for the Assistant Treasurer Collector, and I had left the admin at 1764. And plus, like, hopefully, I didn't... I should have done a 2%. Did I do a 2% there, Bradley, now, on the 1764? I'm not sure. If you click on the 27, there might be a formula. No. So I don't know, I feel like I need to meet with maybe PPPB, maybe the Select Board, just to talk about wages and, you know, where we can go with them to get candidates in.
So Angie's on until mid-April, you said?
April 13th. Yeah, and, you know, the other position is vacant, so as...
Is there a reason why one of them's 31 hours and one's 30? It's just historical?
Yeah. One of... Because we have office hours from 4 to 6 every other Tuesday, so the Assistant does the late hours.
Now, I'm going to say this correctly. When we had Angie here, she left and came back.
Right.
And we had her in one position, and you made a recommendation for a promotion to another position on an interim basis.
Right.
And I think I was one of the ones that was very vocal about saying, "I want this interim to see if somebody's going to stick in the position."
Right. No, and I'm happy we did that, so, you know...
I'm just very...
I mean, she would have, I guess she would have given her notice.
More power to anybody to go find a better job, but I'm sorry that we've gone through these gymnastics.
I know. But she, you know, she went to... She's going to another municipality, and it's over, you know, it's like double the salary, so...
I don't begrudge anybody for a better salary, you know, but...
I know.
But it was a lot of, I mean, we talked about this, the number of positions she had in a very small amount of time.
Right.
And applied for more than one position in this town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we've been, you know, very accommodating, I think, so I'm sorry that you're going to be in this position to have to...
No, I understand. I was hoping that, you know, she would stick around.
Yeah.
It's kind of how she said, that's what she said, but, you know, I can only take what she says to me and hope that it's what it is.
It's just unfortunate that you've got to go through this whole changeover yet again.
Well, they have two at the same time.
Yeah. And you've got a new person on, on the admin?
There is not a person, yeah.
That's Robin filling in, right?
Right, Robin, and she's only there 12 to 15 hours a week, so it's not...
Right.
I'm going to have to get someone in there fast for at least one of the positions. Yeah, they're both posted. So I have two applicants for the admin position, so...
Okay. What's the Treasurer Software Support one? Is that a... Crossed out, or is it...
So I didn't fill anything in there because I'm not sure where we're going with this software.
This would be the financial software, so it...
Yeah.
When we change over.
Then it goes away.
This fiscal year, it will be in the cost of doing the changeover.
Right.
However, it will come back in fiscal year '25.
Yeah, so I don't even know...
Is that the total amount? Is that only in the Treasurer's budget?
Yeah.
So what's the total amount?
We don't really know an amount, because we don't even really know where we're going with, like, as far as what software company. All I do know is that point, their last day, that they'll... That we can use that software is June 30th, 2024. So if we don't do something for this fiscal, for '24, we definitely need to do something for '25. And at this point, if we don't go with, like, one of QDS, Zobrio, I'm concerned that there won't be enough time to do the transition, because Vader and Springbrook both said they need five to six months, whereas QDS and Zobrio said they could do it in one to two. So I'm not sure why there's such a difference in implementation, but...
Well, we've definitely put aside money for this procurement in the ARP of money. So it's been encumbered, as far as we're concerned.
We know, in fact, we're going to have this software.
We've put money aside for it. The intent is to get it this fiscal year.
I know, whether or not we get it.
Yeah.
And then she's left with...
I just think that if we're going to start new software, like, from what I hear, the best option is to, like, go live on July 1st and not to break up a fiscal year. That's why I feel like it's almost too late for two of the companies for July 1st.
That's...
I think that QDS probably can do it quicker because they have the deal they bought out, so they know the software now.
Yeah, it's QDS, yeah, yeah. So I know they're on the list of the three finalists anyway that you're all looking at here.
Correct.
So just to clarify, the 12744 is nothing for this year, but it would be the annual...
Yeah, that was last year's, the annual for Point and Soft Right.
Okay, fine. That's why it's not there, okay.
Okay. Yeah.
All right, perfect. So it's nothing for '24. Perfect. Okay?
So that's it. It's, I guess it's pretty straight, you know?
Also very straightforward.
Yeah. And then if we want to go to the townwide... So I think on townwide, the only thing I budget for is postage.
And, no, actually, that would be in the... Is it town? Yes, that's right. Townwide would be postage, I'm thinking employee benefits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I was looking at the expense report today, because I... On that, and so right now, left in that account for this year, we have... We budgeted last year the $16,000... Are you pulling it up, Bradley? Okay. We have $3,249.09 left. So we have to do another mailing of real estate bills at the end of June. So that would be like $1,800 right there, which only leaves, you know, $1,400, and then what's already in the reserve fund, which I believe, I think right now it's like $800, so I feel like it's going to cut it really close. But hopefully it will get us through. So originally, I had said... I had talked to the rep from...
You could avoid mailing a few tax bills right here.
Well, we tried to do that.
And I just got one today?
Yeah, you probably did. Yeah, so I had talked to the rep at Pitney today, and not that she can, like, say for sure, but she estimates that postage will go up next year probably like 5 cents total throughout the year to make it 65 cents per envelope. So based off how many mailings we do with them alone, that's like $1,400.
They don't have forever stamps on postage meters?
No. We also pay Art Jones for mailing our excise bills, so we pay the postage reimbursement to him. So I feel like we definitely need to increase that. Did you say you threw in a number?
That is the number I threw in.
What's that?
811?
The $17,045.
So it's a 5%?
Oh, okay.
Which was a 5% increase.
Okay. I put 17,500, so whatever you...
I was just trying to throw a place sticker in there until you did a further analysis.
Yeah. Okay. So if you want it...
Do we want to increase that a little bit then, so it ends up being additional 400?
It would make sense.
So make it 17,500? Is that what you're saying?
17,500?
Is that what you're saying, Jen, 17,500?
Yeah. Actually, I had put 17,650, sorry.
There you go.
People at the op are paying online. I mean, is there any way to send them out electronically instead of by mail?
So possibly with new software, you can do that, but they have to...
They have to.
It's complicated because they have to agree to it. So then, I'm not sure how it works with the new software. Do you guys use that at all? So can people, like...
So we use, in South Hadley, we use Invoe's Cloud, our bill pay system. And then people can register, and they can link all their bills. We have sewer, real estate, personal property. It doesn't work for motor vehicle. They can still pay online, but you can't register because motor vehicle changes so much with new plates. And so then they can check off if they want to be paperless. And then it doesn't work like it's supposed to yet, still. But we have a bill print company that prints all of our bills, and so it's supposed to get the file from Invoe's Cloud for all the people that have paperless checks. And mark all those as paperless, and they get emailed. So then we don't have to print the bill. But it was never set up right, and I've still been trying to get the company to fix it. So now I have to run the reports, dump them into Excel, and uncheck...
Cross-check.
...the manually, which is what I was doing today. 875 sewer bills and 603 real estate bills.
Yeah, and so...
It still saves, you know? It's not complicated, and the people that want it, you know, don't want a hard copy, don't get one, but it's a little more manual labor than it's supposed to be.
Yeah, right.
I also noticed that South Hadley was one of the references from Cadian?
From where?
Cadian, the postage company? Not, so you guys use, is it Cadian and not Pitney Bowes? Is that how you say it? Am I saying it wrong?
Oh, yeah, I guess. I see, I have a postage machine, but actually, the postage machine that's here is way nicer.
Is it? Okay, that's good to know.
Has the weigh-on way.
Yeah. We don't have that anymore.
It's like the old one, where you have to weigh it on a separate scale and then run it through.
We don't have the weigh-as-you-go anymore.
Oh, you don't?
No.
Oh.
Unfortunately. That was nice, but, yeah.
Okay, so, but you said, just to check out that, you had just put in 17,650, you said, or?
Right.
Other than 17,500?
Yeah, change, put it in 17,650. Perfect.
Okay, there we go.
And I think next year, too, we're going to, like, try harder to track the postage from... Well, not try harder, but actually track the postage from each department. So rather than do the... Everyone has to, right now, if they're doing a large mailing, they have to do a funds report on the machine before the mailing and after. But instead, if we can track it, maybe each department can just be, like, billed quarterly or semi-annually or something like that, you know? So they don't have to worry about the report and then... So they don't have to worry about the report, and then, because a lot of times, you know, they forget to do the report, and then, yeah, so.
Mm-hmm, okay, good. Any other questions from anybody?
No. Well, good luck, Jen, with the positions, it's a lot of change over this past year.
I know.
Okay, well, thanks, Jen.
And then, oh, I'm not-
Employee benefits.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I-
We weren't trying to chase you out, I thought you were done.
I have debt service too.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So which, Bradley, you can go to whichever one you want. So this is debt service. Okay. So debt service, I guess. What's that?
What did it ask?
Well, we retired the ambulance debt this year, well, this year was the last payment, so.
Okay.
I guess I would have to look at the debt schedule to be sure, but we are, you know, we will have to add the East Street Bridge this year as an actual principal payment, so right now I have to renew that note. So I was debating on whether or not, you know, do we want to like make payments on that, as if it's a 20-year, a 25-year, a 30? So those numbers would be like for a 20-year, 80,000, 25-year, which Ed suggested, 64,000, and a 20-year is 53,333, 33, for, it is a debt exclusion though, so although it will come off on the expense, it also goes into the revenue, yeah, so. We'll have to budget for that, we also have, we'll have to budget for interest for Randall's two new vehicles. He received a loader in September or October. So that's 221,465 dollars that I'm going to borrow for, at the same time I renew the note with, for the East Street Bridge. And also a dump truck that he's getting, that I believe he said so far it's estimated at 261, but he said it could change. Because we bought, we had appropriated 298.
294.
294.
Yeah.
But he said, when I talked to him about it, that so far the price tag on that was 260, what did he say?
So those lines are not here yet, they're-
They're not, well, so for the Randall's two vehicles, we'll only have to do interest next year. There'll only be an interest payment, am I correct in that?
Yes. And then the big question is, do we actually get delivery of the dump truck before June 30th?
Well, that's the thing, it's like, because if I don't borrow for it, then it's a deficit, and that's bad for free cash. So I feel like I have to either way.
I would take the chance.
Just borrow for it.
The last time I had talked to Randall about this, this goes back to probably late December, early January. It's, if, the body is being built, and they were estimating March, so.
So he had an estimated invoice of 260,084, but you're saying take the chance and borrow for it, because most likely we will receive it this fiscal year? Yeah, he thinks so too, so, but he's not sure.
Sense.
Yeah. So we will have, and I don't have those, so I was in touch with the financial advisor, so I'm hoping to talk to her more tomorrow and get those numbers to put into here.
So we don't even have a placeholder line on those yet?
They're not even there yet, no.
All right.
So those aren't there, and-
So maybe, Bradley, would it make sense just to put in a line, just so we have a blank line?
Yeah.
Just so we don't lose it?
Maybe we can take out some of the old ones.
Some of the old ones, yeah, clean it up, exactly.
Yeah.
Great idea, thank you, Donna.
Hampshire Regional Debt.
Let's get rid of that Norris roof, once and for all.
Right.
It'll come back to us again, I'm sure.
That stayed long, way too long, that was 1995, you know, that was-
And how about the Hampshire Regional Debt, that's gone, right?
The Halloween storm, that's been gone for a while.
Yeah.
Let's get rid of that.
Where is that? Oh, that in there, okay. So we need interest on something, Randall's dump truck, or whatever it is, highway truck? Dump truck?
Um, sorry, yeah, there's a dump truck and a loader.
Loader.
Two separate things?
Two, yeah, two separate items. Yes.
Oh, interest, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, one's a John Deere loader, and the other's a freightliner.
Because if I borrow in June, we will only have to pay interest, right, in-
That'd be the loader, Bradley?
In '24. Or will there be a payment?
If you borrow in June.
Right.
Are you gonna, are you gonna do permanent financing, or are you just gonna do it year to year?
Year to year right now, you can't do permanent, right now?
For the equipment, if it's 10 years or less, you can do it year to year anyway, you don't have to go and do permanent.
Right.
Because you'll probably save money doing that.
Right.
Since you do, you generally do a borrowing at the end of the year anyway.
Right. So- So we will have a payment on it then?
You will have, because it will be due, it will be here.
Right, yeah.
So you will have a payment next, in fiscal '24.
All right, it'll be good to clean up a couple lines there that are excess that have been paid off, and that we don't have to look at them again.
Do you want to add a principal, Bradley, too? For each of those?
The same two, just principal as well, just so we-
Full event, yeah.
Just so we don't lose them.
Yeah, exactly.
Couple days from now, we'll all forget what we said we were gonna add, if we don't add them now, so.
Yeah.
At least having a placeholder helps.
Yeah, so besides those items that aren't there, everything else I just filled in.
The Norris school, the top there, can it, the debt on the Norris school? Yeah.
What else?
Get rid of a few of those. Good. All right, and then, something on, was it retirement funds, or what else did you have?
Yep, so employee benefits. All right, so, so Hampshire County Retirement, the contribute, the annual contribution with making a single payment, so getting the discount, is 1,041,155 dollars this year. So that's, um, without the contrib, without doing the one payment, it would have been 1,058,521.
That's, okay. That's a pretty good increase though, from last year, right?
Yeah, but you know, we did have a lot-
28 percent.
You know, with increases in salaries, it will increase this, so there were, you know, quite a few salary increases last year, and, you know, just raises overall with union contracts.
Okay. Workers' comp, same.
Workers' comp, Ed does.
Well, actually, we both kind of do it, so.
You do?
Well, the big question is, what do we have left for credit? Do you know?
On workers' comp? Or you mean unemployment?
Yeah, okay.
Workers' comp is you, right?
Yeah, it was me, and I went over that at the last meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
So on unemployment right now, we have a, I did write it down, we have a 1,692 dollar credit. And that is from being reimbursed for some of those fraudulent cases. So, I don't know if you want to-
Has there really been any activity this year?
No.
No, yeah.
No. Pretty much no activity this year. So, I don't know if we want to do the 8,000, or do less, because we have the credit. That's kind of, you just never know with that, so.
I'll come visit you tomorrow, and we'll take a look at what the year started with a credit, and what we've got left now. And if there hasn't been any activity.
Oh, what we have left in unemployment right now? Like in our budget?
Well, no, because what we started the year is for a credit, and if that credit has shrunk.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll give it a-
There's, yeah, but there has, but not like, like really slight activity, yeah.
Then we'll revisit, we'll revisit that, and if we're gonna change it, we'll send it along to Bradley.
Okay. All right, so, what's next, group health, retiree insurance, and then group health insurance. So group health insurance, I kept on looking at it again and again, because, like, how did it decrease? Because the rates increased 6 percent. And I, I haven't asked Ed to come look at it with me, but we haven't had time to actually sit down yet. But I think, after looking, I think it's because we had like five people come off of, you know, or six people come off of the PPO plans, between like family and single, and that, like just the, the family is like 16,000 employer cost for a year for one person, so. And I use whoever, like, the employees on the plan, when I'm doing the budget at that time, to calculate. And then I add a few plans of the PPO family and the PPO dental. Just to be safe, and, you know, in case like there's others that join, like you just don't know, like who's gonna join, who's gonna come off. So that's how I've been doing it. Usually I'm, I calculate and I budget over what's needed, but so I know that this year, we were able to use some of the, um, group health-
Right.
Funds twice, so.
Yeah.
So that's what I have so far, and I, I have an Excel spreadsheet that I made up to calculate that. And it calculates the dental, the health, the retiree, and then the Medicare. And I think I sent that, did I, with my budget, right, Bradley? No? That's okay, I can send it.
Okay. Great.
And then OPAB. So OPAB is, do I have that here?
That's a decrease as well?
Yeah, because, because it's not the full valuation, it's like the mid-cycle, so every other year, there's less cost. So this past year, it was the, I believe, the 3,465 for the full valuation. And because this is like a mid-cycle evaluation, it's less, so it's 1386. And that's just like what they sent me contracted. I have that paper somewhere, isn't these pilot papers, but?
And you think that's, that's the right cost, though, I mean, there's no, no worries that it's not correct?
Um, yeah. I have it here, so. Yeah, 1,386 dollars fiscal year mid-cycle reflective of 60% discount. So, it would have been 2,079, they said there's a 60% discount, so it's 1,386 dollars. And the full was 3465. And that was for fiscal year '23.
Just looking at the last expense report, if I'm catching this right. So we're at this point in the year, and we're about 60%, 61% expended on group health retiree and group health insurance and Medicare. Do those, will those fill out more between now and June? Or is that, have we overbudgeted?
Is it only 60-something percent, is that, this is the up-to-date one, Bradley?
This is, uh-
Does this include March 30th?
Yeah, yeah, I think we're close to 75% now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is the-
It is close to 75, and we'll have April, May, June, so three more payments. I mean, I do think there might still be some extra, so if you're needing to transfer any money, you can ask me.
Careful what you offer.
I know. But-
Yeah. Okay. No, I was just checking, just to be sure, sometimes we, you know, we forget that we actually maybe have another quarter to go here, and that will actually get pretty much used up, so.
Yeah.
All right, good. All right, if no other questions, thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Okay. We got the man of the hour. Come on up, Bradley.
Bradley Oxon, Town Accountant. I have my budget on the screen, I'm going to adjust it as we go, because I did it wrong. So, everything is level funded, except the expenses, which I can bring back down to 1790, 1780. And the soft write is the, our current software, that I can remove to match Jen, because she removed hers. In case we do adopt a new financial software, the ARPA funds would cover that expense. So I will be removing that as well. So I am level funded, except the independent audit went up 16,000 dollars from last year. So I can't do anything about that one.
And maybe just as you remove the soft write there, Bradley, just make a footnote for yourself, just so you don't-
Yeah, I'm just gonna highlight, that's what I've been doing.
That it's related to ARPA, so.
And the soft write, though, now that I'm thinking about it, if you don't know who you're switching to yet, or anything, generally those bills are due, like they issued that July 1. So if, you might not change until later in the year, which it sounds like. Or be, go live for July 1, net, you know, 2025, fiscal '25, you're gonna have to pay the full-
Right.
I mean, you're gonna have to probably pay it anyway, because it's gonna be due in July regardless. Right?
Yeah, that's why originally I-
I know the point, I won't have to, but there is a fee that we have to pay to buy our data. But I think that was gonna be part of the ARPA clause.
But what about, what about soft writes?
For soft write, yeah, I mean, when we began July 1, we actually were paying for the whole, the 24. I'm not sure what they're-
I think, I don't know, I mean, you'd have to ask them whether they're gonna charge, and then maybe reimburse you if you don't. You know, refund you, but, yeah.
So are you suggesting not to take out the 4200?
I'm suggesting that we're gonna have to leave it in, because I think it's gonna have to be paid in the month of July, and then see how-
And we took the 12 out of hers.
Well, mine, the 12 for mine was point in the soft write.
Right, so we're just gonna, just the soft write portion, I guess.
We really have to, like, I see, Bradley, and I have to get together and really make a decision on June, because-
Yeah, we need to actually come forward with our recommendation for the April 11 Select Board Meeting.
Okay, so maybe, maybe, put that back in, but just highlight it in red or something, so you- Yeah.
Pretty sure it's gonna go up in price from last year, so, but for now, I'll keep-
They usually go up about 5%.
So I'll keep the last year's budget in there. Okay, all right. All right, so, okay, I'm going to show my narrative. So, I'm going to explain that I included a class, $900 bootcamp, which we can disregard, because that's not gonna be in my Budget One, that would be in my wish list.
So this becomes 1,100 dollars.
I think it should be in your Budget One.
Well, I agree, but to be level funded, so, last, this past fiscal year, this current fiscal year, however you want to say it, I took one class about municipal law to prepare for one half of my certification exam, and I wanted to prepare for the second half, this coming fiscal year, so that's why I put it in my Budget One, but we can disregard and say, to be level funded, to remove it.
But I think it's in your contract, isn't it?
Yeah.
Contracted to take this class?
No, 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 in your, in your work contract, I think we said that you would be getting this within two years.
Working toward your certification, I think.
All right.
Within a couple of years, so.
Because I have taken the certification exam, I've got experience and know what's on it, but they can always switch it up.
I mean, I, I, I don't know.
I think it should be in one, but I have-
I don't think I would take it out of your Level One budget at this point in time.
Because I was-
I mean, it's not a current, it's not a current expense, but in your, well, how would you characterize it? Would you put it in the year-to-year change column, or where would you put it? Or just put it in this year's column one budget, the $900 for the, you know?
I might go into that wonderful gray area and actually say that, due to his personal service contract of getting certified, that it's, you could also, you could look at it as a contractual increase in the tab one.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, don't take it out of there yet.
Yeah.
All right. This miscellaneous expense, that was just a plug number that's been in there for quite a while, and I reduced it down to $80, I can reduce it even more. I don't really buy much office supplies, unless there's a big problem of printer breaks, and we need toner or a bunch of folders or something, but yeah, that could be negotiated down, no problem. My wish list is everything on my Budget One, except an additional Mark Abrams Uniform Mass Accounting Systems classes. So there's explanations on the next page. My required expenses that are in both. I explain that both myself and my assistant need to pay $50 a year to be a part of the Massachusetts Municipal Auditors and Accountants Association, which is the certification-
That's a training you all just went through, right?
Yes.
Recently?
Yes, we pay $50 every July, and in March, we will go to UMass to experience the education program. And if you qualify, you can take the certification exam, which I did this past March. My new assistant Denise did not join me in March, this, early this month.
We saved. Is it only offered once a year?
Yes, the educational program. So I plan on making her a member in July, and then having her join me next March to the education program, so I'm considering those required for both of us. We have a 1099 reporting for all our vendors that would qualify for 1099s, and we pay over $600. So I need to order forms for that every year, so that's around $200 that I'd- So I need to order forms for that every year, so that's around $200 that I put in my budget. Goes up every year, but that's a safe number. And then I have a contract with Durenzi to service my printer in my office and four times a year they contact me to ask me how the printer's doing, what the current count on the printing is, and they send me an invoice every time. So that's a safe number also, four times a year, about $30 each time.
And as you refer to that as printer, it's actually a copy printer, right?
Correct.
Right.
And my optional wishlist items were the boot camp, which is the second type of class I can take, where I took a municipal law, which was very informative about municipal laws, of course, and all the duties of the town, positions, statutes, whatever. And the second class I can take is from Mark Abrams called Boot Camp, which prepares me for the practical exam, which is a bit more pricier, it's a little pricier, but that's just what the harder portion of the exam that everyone fails and it would help. I know Vicki in the past signed up for this class and I still have her notes, I can use those, but I'm sure it's been updated and there's more things that can be on the exam, so I would like to attend. And then the optional UMass, this Uniform Massachusetts Accounting Systems, which is another big course that Mark Abrams offers, is very detailed on everything about accounting and that's just more of a, way more of a wish thing than what I just need immediately. It's, how many sessions? It's 12 sessions and up to four employees can, may attend, so both me, myself and my assistant could experience this if we paid this $1,400. But yeah, I'm not stressing that I need that. I would prefer just to take the boot camp and then attend the MM AAA courses in March next year. And the only thing else I want to mention is I've been informed that if I work 35 hours a week, I would be considered a full-time employee by the, excuse me, the retirement program, my pension. So that's just something I want to throw out there that currently I am working.
34, is it?
No, I'm working 34, but technically I work over 35, so my schedule wouldn't change and I'm not asking for more money to my salary just to say I work $35 hours a week just to have that, but again, I don't think it's a huge increase, but nice to say I'm full-time.
So 35 hours makes it full-time?
Yeah, perhaps you're going to retire and he's graduated, you know, it's a full year service.
Oh.
So he could just, if he could have mentioned his contract to say he's actually 35 hours, it would help for that.
I would be in favor of finding the money to support going to the Mark Abrams both classes, both the UMass Accounting System classes and the boot camp. I think that, you know, he's been around for a long time and offered these, I think it would be a great way to, to get more knowledge and to network and have other people in the classes, have people to call and bounce things off of, and I think it could really help you learn, you know, not that, we all, you know, not.
I agree.
But I think that would be awesome.
I believe his courses are all virtual now, at least he hasn't planned on making them in person since the lockdowns.
They're all virtual.
The municipal law, when I attended, twice was a virtual Zoom meeting, but it would be 12 times over the course of a few months in the fall, I believe it would start.
Okay. Can I just ask a question? How does that, those hours affect both of you?
Well, because I'm elected.
Right, you're both elected.
It's considered your full-time status to county retirement, but I am 35 hours right now too.
Okay.
But that's because I have every other Tuesday.
Right, right.
So.
Yeah.
But yeah, anyone who's elected gets a full year of credit and service regardless of the number of hours they work.
Okay. And then police, fire, you are all theoretically 40 because of, right?
We're all.
So does this affect anybody besides Bradley?
I mean, it affects like both positions in my office because they don't do 35 hours.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess anyone that is eligible for county retirement, I mean, but there's some that are eligible and they do 20 and you're not, you know, so they're not even close, so I guess maybe those that are close to 35 hours going to my office, is there anyone else? Maybe like C O R director, like if you were going to increase those hours, you might not think about 35.
Because the director's currently at 26.
Right, but there was a request to go, what, to 32?
Yeah, 32.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, and that might be a request that comes back before us too.
Yeah.
Just to bring that forward in terms of who would be affected and have us take it up as a separate, separate item.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I think, I mean, originally it was, we increased it by four to try to have that financial team get together on Fridays, so didn't realize the repercussions of that.
Yeah, okay. Anybody have any questions? Francine, anything?
No.
Joy?
No.
Take their cut.
All right. I think that's all we have, so thank you Bradley.
Thank you Bradley.
Thank you.
Yep, good. All righty. Well, thanks for putting all these things together and trying to keep them updated and straight and we look like we're getting there. I, I think as we get together on Tu, not Tuesday, on Thursday next, we'll, that will sort of, you know, finish our, our overall talking about people's requests and then allow us to really chomp down and say, okay, where do we have to really sharpen our pencils here because it's really a.
There's still a few moving, moving parts in a couple of places here.
Because then the, the two, you know, the level funding expense plus, and then the wishlist, we're, we're looking at numbers that are higher than what the projected revenue is. So even the, the basic one is like $100,000 more than our, our anticipated revenue, so.
That's why it'd be helpful if, you know, finance get a chance to meet, even if it hasn't been all these individual meetings, to be able to kind of look at the whole budget wishlist 1 and 2 and just say, you know, like, like you're supportive of him having some education, like what else, you know, would, should we be thinking about?
Yeah, I think there were a couple of things, Ed, you said that were still in flux with the revenue estimates, right? Because of the vocational tuition and so forth, right? So.
It's April 1, right?
Well, is the revenue estimates of, okay, you know, when will you see a preliminary from the House Ways and Means and will that differ much from what the governor's budget was? That's on the revenue side. On the expense side, we won't know until after April 1st, which will be, we should be able to find out next week of how many students actually applied to Smith Vocational or Westfield Vocational because they have to April 1st to, to apply and, and see where that may affect our budget. I'm still waiting to hear from Maya on both our workers' comp and general insurance for our final numbers. Right now what I have plugged, plugged is just what they have given us for an estimate for our risk factors.
Okay.
Yeah, and then those two new debt numbers.
Right. All right.
Who's supposed to be presenting next week?
On the 6th, we'll have Border Health, Cemetery Commission, CONCOM, Building Commissioner, and Parks if they choose to come. So the, the ones that are definitely changes, I think, from last year would be requests from probably Border Health, Cemetery, and CONCOM will be probably the three that have got, according to their budget narrative at least, have got more, more things to talk about than they had last year perhaps. Okay? So that'll be on Thursday next week, because Tuesday's a caucus, so we won't be meeting on Tuesday. Okay? All right, so a couple more items and then we'll get ready to close here. We're in Articles, Ed, we're, we're still aiming for the 6th to get Articles in?
Yes, that's the deadline. We've, we've had some filed already for community preservation, there's three. There'll be a couple for naming rights under the new bylaw and we'll have, the budget, we'll have capital. We may have a new one for, to create an opioid settlement stabilization fund.
Right. And we'll have the two, at least two, I think, from the E360, the renumbering of all the bylaws and.
The general bylaws and then, yes, the zoning. The zoning and we've also got a zone change recommendation for an article from the Planning Board.
And maybe the, the MLP from the Tech Committee.
Correct.
Municipal Light Plant, if we decide to go there.
Yeah, that's just a vote of confidence, right?
It's a second vote, it's a required second vote that we have to do in order to move forward, so, yeah. But, okay, so we will get those lined up so they're more visible and more specific probably for the 11th, April 11th meeting.
Yes.
And does Capital have a meeting planned or is, there must be some ideal date that once these Articles come in that they will be meeting?
They haven't as of yet. We have reached out and asked them to, so.
Okay. And you're planning on, you said you had reprioritized your capitals, originally it was going to be to fix the sidewalk out.
Because of the fact that we've gotten the edict that the state has changed its elevator codes, that we need to spend $10,000 to remodel, I won't say remodel, but to bring our elevator up to code, that now becomes my number one, whereas the sidewalk was number one before. So the sidewalk will become number two and then the number three, which would have been number two before, was replacing the mini-split unit that serves the basement room where we store the extra IT equipment and also is now manned, or personal, personed at certain times for the large format scanner.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right. Any other business that can't wait until the next regular meeting of the 11th? I have one item, if I can bring that up, if anybody has anything.
I just wanted to mention about the naming. If, if you can confirm as soon as possible when we're going to be discussing that or having the hearing, the person that submitted the original request is actually away that week with a large group of family members, but she said she would find out if her sister would be available because she really wants to have a family member here. This is the naming of the East Street Bridge. So if you could just let me know, is, I think I had eight, the 18th down there, so if it's, if we can confirm that so I can let her know, that would be good.
I'll have to talk about that date again and just nail that down, but we were trying to figure out.
That's as late as it can get.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, not technically, but as far as the meetings are now set.
Exactly. All right. So anybody else have anything? Okay, I have just one thing. I circulated right before the meeting, I just got a resume that I forwarded around to Select Board members and Ed, I've been reaching out to some of my contacts and networks trying to find out if we perhaps had somebody that would be what I would call basically a facilitator, mediator, trainer type facilitator, community, community meeting type facilitator person and, and not looking, you know, for somebody internally, but rather somebody out of town. And I did get a resume of somebody from Wendell, Massachusetts. It's a person who's a professional.
Mediator.
Mediator, trainer, facilitator type person who's done a lot of work in, in many ways. And at this point in time, I don't know the person and, but I was going to ask if I could have the Select Board allow me to reach out to this person and find out if they're interested and possible to be a facilitator for this community meeting that we started talking about a little bit last year, last, last week. And, you know, what, what dates they might be available and whether this would cost us something, which I'm assuming it will.
So this is the meeting to discuss the fire and moving forward, planning.
Moving forward.
Highway, water.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and basically I'd like to look at it, you know, broader than the fire. I mean, the fire is kind of the impetus for us having this meeting, the fire on Maple Street, but it really, in my mind, is much more, kind of looking at long-term, longer term, shorter term and longer term, planning for, you know, what does it mean to live outside the hydrant district in, in a rural community, in a very, you know, with limited resources. I mean, just to have that community discussion, so bringing together not just the fire department, but police, highway, water, planning, zoning, citizens. I mean, so we're, we're in the process of planning it. I know there's a level of impatience, but I just wanted to assure people that we are not ignoring the whole process and we just want to try and make it a constructive time to learn from this tragical, tragic event and really look forward in terms of, you know, what do we have to do for changes? You know, are there things that we can do that are not necessarily, you know, terribly difficult to do and other things may take longer? So I think it would be a great time to get people together, so, but I really think it would be helpful to have somebody totally outside and objective to sort of navigate that session. So this is just one person that's come across my radar screen.
I think it'd be great to have somebody facilitate, just because, you know, we have had the same person come to the meeting and is pretty adamant about training and moving, something happening, and I just think that it's, you know, it was a tragic thing that happened and it's a sensitive thing and we just want to make sure that it's well facilitated, a discussion where it's, so I would make a motion to have you reach out to this person and find out their availability and also what kind of charge they might have in a community meeting.
I'll second that. Okay. Any further discussion? Joy? From a mediator's point of view?
As a mediator's point of view, who actually went to the program that the Collaborative Resolutions Group and was certified by them, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. So you don't want to lead it?
I do not. I am, as a Select Board member, I don't know.
It's important to be. Yeah, no, I agree. So that's fine, but thanks for that. Okay. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I will reach out and do see what I can get for information of this person's availability and if not, we'll go back to the drawing board, but.
Thank you. And we also need to, in terms of setting a date, I think the expectation would probably be at Norris.
Well, not sure. We've got to figure that out too. So Ed and I have been talking about that, so we'll see what, what makes sense. It won't be in this room, that I can say.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So with that, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Second Francine. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.
Bradley, thank you.
Thank you very much.